Welcome to the Halifax Planning Board. It is 7:04 on April 20, 2023. The Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58. It can be viewed on YouTube soon. And tonight we have Bert Gainer, Rick Murray, and myself, Amy Trup. And this is the agenda. Hearing continued for 0 and 592 Plymouth Street. Revised plans and supplemental drainage information. Hearing continued for 0 and 314 Plymouth Street, both the special permit and the site plan application. Hearing continued for 359 Plymouth Street. Please continue to the May 4, 2023 meeting. So we will do that. We will have discussions and maybe some actions taken on 416 Plymouth Street, the Kennedy K9 camp. We have mail and correspondence from the Planning Board in Pembroke and Bridgewater. We have meeting minutes for January 19, 2023, February 2nd, I'm sorry, February 16, 2023, meeting minute. And we have other business and mail. Can I have the motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as read.
And can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First on our list is 0 and 592 Plymouth Street for the revised plans and the supplemental drainage information. Hey, how are you now?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're here last time and we've updated all the open and outstanding recommendations provided by Mr. Brennan. And we have addressed the compact spaces. We were able to move them to the lower half of the parking lot, on the lower half of property. We were also able to address the additional inspection ports. We were also able to address the drainage calculations. We were able to run the clogs after we changed the parking lot. We met with the Conservation Commission as well. They also voted and approved the design that we have. We added a fence to satisfy their needs as well as plackets every 50 feet or so. And then I believe we addressed the loading area for the dumpster and the enclosure. We addressed the kickcock bar. We also addressed the snow storage areas. And we also have no exterior lighting as proposed. It depends on, once the building's built, once we get an electrical plan for the electrician, for the house, the building rather, where the lights will go on the building. And I believe the only outstanding question would be, as Mr. Brennan had stated, for the gravel walkway. It states the walkway is now specified to be gravel or paved. Should the board approve the project, we recommend the condition that the walkway shall be an ADA compliant. And I spoke with him and I agree with that. There's a compact wrap material that we can use. The compact's down as ADA compliant.
Where's that walkway?
It's the walkway that connects from here all the way down to the second parking lot. The original idea was if we had the handicap parking spaces up top, having it gravel. But as you stated, if we go with the compact material, it'll be ADA compliant. Because we're gonna go with the same width. And that covers and serve covers. So it would just have to be dense enough so that any wheels or machinery or anything like that doesn't...
Wheelchair stuff like that? Is there anything on the ADA compliance that requires the handicap parking space to be specified distance from the building or...
Oh, they are already up top here, so they are...
Oh, there's enough up top?
Yeah.
Oh, it's compact car around here?
Yeah, so we moved those to make them full size.
Yeah, they moved the parking spaces, but they're not compact. They made full-size spaces that are always there. So they don't have any more compact spaces.
Yeah, so we alleviated that completely. But in future projects, hopefully, the town will add some language for that for other projects.
And even though they don't have designated handicap spaces down in the permanent paving area, it's still one of the publics. So you need to have an ADA route from that.
A whole number of parks there.
ADA route?
Yes, so that's the walkway.
What about the easement? Do you have anything written up as far as what the easement will be with the other property? If it ever is to be sold or anything like...
Yeah, so once, I spoke with our attorney. Once that everything's approved, the order conditions as well as the permits, that would be order conditions that we would have to tie to indeed. So he needs the permits to be... What was the term for used? I apologize. He would need the permits as well as the order conditions and compliance to be tethered to the easement.
So it could be recorded?
So it could be recorded.
That would definitely be a requirement that we would need to install. Like it would be no question.
Yep.
Also, with the proximity, I understand there might not be a lot of cars added to the traffic. However, where the entrances and exits are so close to a dangerous intersection and then one that is a residential area, we really would like to... I would really like to talk about what would happen if your traffic was more. Would you be willing to help the town with the issue with that traffic light? I mean, that traffic stop? Like helping us turn it into a light if it becomes heavier traffic or a problem with the residents for safety issues?
So as a corner of multiple properties on the corner, I would not say no to participating with my neighbors as well. But being the sole property to incumbent all the expansion and construction of an intersection, that would be more for the town and the DPW to handle. For us, we believe that we satisfied the requirements for doing the traffic study. And the study has found that I believe it's only one additional car loaded. And on top of that, we provided ample distance from the other road coming off the, onto the main road. And then down below, we have more acreage to put the parking entrance further toward the house. But we chose equidistant to allow a radius and allow space for people to be able to turn left-hand way and then not affect the neighboring house. With regards to future development for the town, you know, it truly depends on how the town designs out a long-term traffic site. Because I don't think it's just this intersection that has an issue. It's the entire road.
Right.
You have to synchronize all lights for certain flows during times when schools are entering and exiting. Because where the bottleneck happens is when traffic flows and slows down for the school during the mornings or the evenings. During rush hour traffic, it's not as much as the speed as the congestion down the street at the Walmart and the Comberley Farms intersection.
I understand all of that meaning. If we find that you have more traffic coming out and that we have a lot of issues due to it, maybe safety issues. I think that it should be considered just in the proximity that we're adding these entrances and exits near an intersection, regardless of what's happening at any other intersection.
I don't believe... If you may reword the question for me just so I can understand it more.
If we find that more traffic is coming in and out of your entrances and cause issues that are on top of what we already have, would we'd have to consider doing something to alleviate that intersection?
Okay. I understand the question. So to help explain it further, I believe if our business brings enough traffic that would generate an additional queuing, like the gas station for example, our portion would be, I believe, portioned to the intersection itself. We're not the only corner on the property and it's hard for me to recommend that we would be responsible for the entire intersection.
Yes, I meant participate.
We would participate, yes.
Wasn't there a question too? I think we had a discussion about trucks or vehicles being left in the parking lot after hours?
Yeah, not commercial vehicles.
There won't be any?
No, because it's just the residential cars.
Yeah, because you said once in a while.
Yeah, if my guys are picking, I need them to park somewhere that we can leave their cars, you know, locked and set at the gas station so they can use our place. But it's not a commercial location, so we're not thinking of...
Not, not, I mean, you were on personal truck. You're a business truck, you're a business vehicle, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not putting 18-wheelers there.
Good.
So you'd be okay with a stipulation?
Yeah, because the wording might depend. So 18-wheelers, yeah, no. But for like my truck, it's a commercial license plate, but it's a truck, so...
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
So...
Right.
But we understand the question, so that would be fair.
Do you want to open it up to the publicers? Or you have any more questions? Does anybody want to discuss 592 Plymouth Street?
Do you have conditions? Any conditions?
Do you?
There are two conditions that we've stated about the...
Participation in the intersection if we find that you have a greater impact than what we've talked about, which is the one car an hour?
Yep.
Or if there's safety issues. No 18-wheelers and...
The deed.
And we need to, yeah, you have to have that parking lot as an easement that would be allowed. And just as a note, you do have your main entrance off of the front edge of that property.
Yes.
I'll second that.
The ADA walkway.
Oh, and the ADA walkway. That's stipulation.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then you'd like me to type that up or you type up all of it?
I think we'll have our secretary type it up. And then if you can get us the Mylar and the copies of the plan so that we can have them signed. Next, we have 0 and 314 Plymouth Street.
I'm gonna let Larry kick it off.
Okay. Okay. Are we gonna start off with the site plan and move to special permit?
That's fine.
Is that all right with you guys? Or what do you want to do?
I'll see if the site plan will...
Larry Silver from Silver Engineering Associates offices in Bridgewater, 615 Petchen. So at our last meeting, there was a vote conditional approval of the site plan. Okay, and subsequent to that, we addressed the issues that were of consultants, Mr. Brennan's comments. Worked back and forth with Rebecca from my office. And I believe that you have a copy of the letter that was our response to each one of those. And then if you have one, I'll let you speak first. It's all from the copy.
You have it?
So what we does, we've worked through those items, which is related to those conditions of approval. There are still other conditions that were attached to it also as it related to making sure that we moved to get the house secured for Mrs. Alger, for the drainage to be go to the property. And also, one of the things that the board wanted to know is whether or not the zoning board was going to vote to approve the use before you continue your discussion about the special permit for the building. There's over 15,000 square feet. So the zoning, we met the zoning board, zoning board had a hearing and they voted to approve. Conditions of approval were very similar to what you had already discussed here. They did emphasize the plantings that would be in front of the area that is where the two-story building would be. So that was, I think, I think that was also in your conditions, but it was also in theirs. Very similar conditions. I can't think if there was any real differences in the conditions of approval from what you had and what they had. So that was done last week, which led us back to resolving the outstanding comments and coming back here to be able to issue to say that you're approved, to approve the site plan as it is. What we would ask is that on the easement issue, that you still hold the condition that there should be no building permits issued for the facility until such terms of easements are in place as a guarantee that that issue, those issues are satisfied. I think having said that, we're gonna want to let go of my point for the technical stuff, but they pretty much, all the items that were remaining were addressed. So I presented you with those plans as they revised, which includes those changes and the drainage calculations. Our only revised drainage report. I've given a set of plans that you have here in the report to the consultants as well.
I did have a couple of extra copies of that response letter. I know I gave you the original.
You didn't.
In case you wanted to have an individual copy of that letter. That was the one that we had submitted.
Larry? Conservation Commission was also addressing?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission also passed issue, you know, voting to issue the order of conditions as well. So all the steps that we needed to take, let us back here.
So where we are with the easement, this is just sort of a timeline with the draft as it currently stands. I met with Gary Alger, no relation, who's representing Rob. He's gonna be getting back with Jan Wolverton, Mrs. Alger's counsel, to kind of go through the final comments. So copy for you. This is no change. This is the draft that's attached here. It's actually the front of your page. So you can see that we're working on it. It's something that I don't think any of the partners really want to engage until we know for certain that the project is moving forward. So I just wanted to show you that we've been moving forward with it all being done, entirely completed.
Could I ask if Mr. Brennan has had an opportunity to review these and the conditions and the points that needed to be addressed? If they were all addressed to your satisfaction?
Yes, I did review the plans and drainage calculations.
On the new revised one?
On the revised. I did send a letter over later this morning to Peggy Selter, saying that they had addressed my comments. So you do have it written. It may not have the front, but it was submitted. They did address something that I hadn't raised.
And drainage degrees of everything?
Yeah, they made, like, we have discussed it last time.
If you don't have it, I have it here.
They said that they were making it larger.
Thank you.
And they did. And I went through the drainage calculations again to make sure that it was large enough to take care of everything and it is.
Did you review the Conservation Commission conditions also?
I did not review those. I did, I only reviewed...
I don't know if they sent you a copy. What is this we're looking at?
The, you have a letter.
That's what we're gonna do.
You're very prepared, Larry.
What's that?
You're very prepared.
Well, just any of the significant changes that we... Anything that jumps out, Mr. Brennan, you'd be looking at?
The significant change that you wouldn't really, other than the size of the basins, you know, anyone knows. And I believe they have a call-up on the retaining wall for the pattern that they have selected with the neighborhood.
Yeah, Mrs. Alger came by the office and agreed on the pattern on the retaining wall. And that was identified with the plan as well.
Did you get a nice cover, Mrs. Alger? Nothing else jumping on there?
No, we did all of it.
Yeah. Oh, we're talking everybody there in front of the...
Yeah, that's a...
You can even see, just even on the locusts in here too. Just here, you can see that it's shown. Oh, that was shown on the locusts. Showed over here. Showing there.
This is all?
Yeah. Showed right in here. Temporary planning easement. No one to put these in on her property. There are some of them that are on our property. But on, over on this side is the ones that would be on her property.
And here is the driveway going out to Plymouth, you know?
Yeah, this is the one coming out from there.
So we are showing a curb cut in there?
We're showing a curb, we're showing a curb cut in there, yes. Potentially for them to use. But they gotta come through and get their approvals with you as well. They've asked me to come to their conservation meeting, but I'm not involved in any of the site design.
And this lines up square with them?
Yes.
So it's all...
There's some movement that has to take place. There's some equipment here, but it does, it lines right up with it. That was the difference before on the condo project was that they were trying to avoid lining up so they wanted to be offset. But here, it's not. It's lined up straight with it. We heard, we listened to the comments, you know, and we tried to avoid any of the controversial issues.
With no new traffic coming out of here?
It's nothing coming out. Storage facilities are minimal.
The gate is what? Where is the gate?
The gate, the gate is back here, right here.
Does anybody from the public want to take a look at these plans?
There are, I have them up on the, on the board.
We appointed that law. She had not just typed in the law. I was correct. The other night, because I specifically asked about this, I was told it's not, it's not a bylaw on commercial business and residential. There's a issue, right? Because, you know, we got that up. That's what I was concerned with. Having this head cut through, going to drive through. But I was still, I was correct. Instead of, no. Ball, on the zoning board, ball.
Attorney?
Darker.
Well, I just, I thought that because of the impact of the 27, which is what we have to account on commercial property, so I think 100%.
It doesn't specify residential? Because I don't, I didn't, you know, it seems at their meeting.
It's like site plans and that whole shuffle of basically that are new for industrial and commercial because we don't look at residential.
Right.
So yeah, the patent doesn't...
It's for, so do you want, what do you want to do?
Well, that's not in part of the plan now.
Well, it's part of the site. It's going to occur. And they got...
So you understand I'm using that on every...
This one is a lot?
So far, it's a lot.
Look, look, look. But of course, I know what you're gonna do. You're gonna walk this.
Right, but it's not...
The zoning, this is, don't you remember? It was for compact safety issues. You guys should put that in there. And I was like, uh, no. No, we don't have that. Doesn't get you? No. Yeah, you know, so they could use the light.
So they changed this to self-storage?
Yes.
And they did? Or maybe they didn't, because I'm working on it.
So we need to make sure that this is a very public conversation.
All right, yes. That's just to you on the forecourt. And the subject is where, even though it's just a small, it's just a little, just for his office. See this little office here? It's already subject. Of course, it is. It was actually showed by two minutes for us.
Really? Because I never purchased it.
Or right there, did I? I guess it was...
We checked on it and that's why. There was a, there was a discussion about whether it was the 2015 delineation report or the one that they used for...
Yeah, it was that, okay.
I just want everybody to know that we're talking about the 2015 versus 2018 conservation line. And that if anybody is interested in hearing this, we're really trying to keep this a public meeting. So can we ask you to ask it out loud? Can we have, guys? We need to have all the questions come through the board. You can look, but we need the questions to come through the board, Larry.
She'll break behind the wall. Well, that's, if they want that, I mean...
No.
You know what that's all about?
We need to have Mr. Russell, like, I want to address all the questions, but we need to make sure we're following the meeting law. So I would love to hear all those questions because we're gonna need to. And we, and having all the conversations, it doesn't get taped, it gets confusing. So, but I love that everybody asks. So we'll come back in. I'm definitely all about having you guys part of this, as you know. We just need to do it according to the law. So I was at the conservation meeting and they used the 2015 delineation for the conservation on this property that has been subdivided from the other property. Just so that you're aware. Because this was two lots. And I don't know if you all recall that, but do we have a page here so that we can show? Two lots, we don't have that. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Do you want me to use that one for now? I just want you to share. So...
I have that all the way through.
Yeah, maybe I can... Can you, Larry, do you have that? So that you can show them what the lot was or anything like that and where it's subdivided and all of that? Do you happen to have that? That would be, well, we have it right here. Well, yeah, he has this pretty board. Is this, is that the floor?
This illustration of it. This one here was...
Very clear. Okay, that's...
So, yeah, finish it on your side. Okay, so let me see, here?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was, this is, there were some, there were some...
Multiple lots.
Yeah, there was a lot of different designations before. But now this is the line. This is one lot?
Yeah.
Okay, and this is the other lot. But they both have the same wetland line.
No, the conservation did not rule that.
They did, because they issued an order of conditions on this plan.
Right, but not for the other lot. And they stated it at their last meeting.
I, I, wow, that's fine. I don't want to, I don't want to muddy...
I'm not the conservation. I'm just telling you what they...
I'm just gonna tell you is that, that filing of that notice of intent was for the whole thing. That was for doing test pits. And they approved the test pits based on that being the racehorse area.
Okay, well, that'll be...
That was a continuation of the line that had already been from 15 to 18, 18 to 21? No, actually, it continued to October of this year, based on this. So, but that's a discussion with them.
Yeah, that's a conservation thing. Yeah, that's a conservation thing. I'm only repeating what I heard. So this, this, this is now two lots, okay? So you can see that this lot comes in, and this is where the storage is being proposed. And then over here is the other lot that is left, that we're not talking about right now, okay? They are, they both got an A and R, so they, and they're both recorded separately at the Registry of Deeds, okay? So this is the lot that we're talking about, and it's going to be directly across the street from the other lot. Okay? Now that we're all back together, I would love to hear all the questions.
I can leave that one there.
Okay.
Do you ever...
Um, not right now. I mean, I just wanted to show the lots. Thanks.
Amy, I've got one on that thing.
Okay.
Frank Johnston, Elm Street.
Okay.
That's, we're gonna have a shared grow driveway, and is that correct, for both properties? Both lots?
We are not, we have not seen the resubmission of the other property yet to declare that 100%.
Yeah, that's common sense says that probably what's gonna happen to you.
They're not allowed to use another entrance, another lot for their entrance.
But it's residential, I think it's, I think it's more limited to residential.
No, it's in Chapter 167, and it's the laws that we abide by here. We don't, we don't do residential.
They have their own curb cuts, but there is one that is, that they have the ability to share because of the land. Because that was the, because of the safety issues, that it was designed that they would actually use for it.
It doesn't specify. It, all it states is that we're not allowed to have an entrance across another lot.
So they have to share the light somehow. That's already, everybody knows it's a cluster there. And...
Which say, which say you're referring to, just the storage?
Well, the storage is in line with the existing...
Correct.
Stop and shop light, we'll call it that. And then if the other property goes, the other commercial property, they would have to somehow tie into that traffic light.
Well, the, the curb cuts on the traffic lights.
Right, and their lot is beyond the other section.
Beyond that.
So it'd be potentially another curb cut out on the 106 below the light?
Well, no more than there is there now.
Well, yeah, but that's...
No additionals.
Right, but now the traffic would be somewhat different there.
Of course, yeah.
With the type of business that are proposed to go in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the time will tell for that.
That's where the traffic would be.
We're not talking about that now, we're talking about this.
Yeah, I understand that, but everybody knows the future holds there. And the traffic's not gonna be the storage facility, it's gonna be the coffee shop, medical center, whatever it might be, auto parts, whatever it might be, yeah.
But each application is judged and determined on its own merit.
Sure, understood, yeah.
Yeah.
Understood.
Duly noted. Anybody else? Mr. Corrigan?
Yeah, Frank Corrigan, Rosewood Drive. At one of our meetings, I suggested the giant abreviations to improve the vision of that two-story building back there. And it was kind of agreed upon that they would look into the giant abreviations. And just checking now, they're telling me they're looking at somewhere around 10 footers. And I don't think that that blocks that 30-foot building that well. And the difference between the 10-footer, which is $400, and a 14 to 16-footer, which is $900, so you get $500 difference per tree. But now you've got some decent coverage already on that two-story building. The giant abreviations planted in some of the other locations are fine at 8 to 10 feet. But in front of that big building, you're still gonna have that big blob sitting back there when, for a few hundred dollars, they can make it aesthetically even look better for the town.
Would you guys be willing to do that?
I, I don't know.
Through the, through, I mean, I don't think we have a problem with doing that, do you?
No, I think that's a bad point. Except for the gentleman, you should ask the board to make that the specification for the driveway.
Yeah.
That's all.
And then also, if the gentleman could provide the folks that we can buy the abreviations from, that would be great.
I, I, I looked to Joey first, because I figured it would be his...
With, 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 there's no, there's only on the back.
Yeah, I thought we had discussed that the last time, that they grow it like, I think Corrigan had told us. They grow like a foot a year or something, so they're gonna be big trees.
They'll grow three feet a year.
I'm sorry?
They'll grow three feet a year.
Three feet a year.
And they will grow to be 30 to 50 feet high. And 10 to 12 feet wide, so they'll fill that right in with a nice bank. If you want to see an example of that, look at the veterans, veterinary building down there.
Oh, yeah.
And behind his fence, the giant abreviations, and they're way up there already.
True story.
And another example is across from the truck body company down on 106. They planted a bunch of them across the street, that private party did. And you can already see three feet of growth from last year on.
Awesome.
So they will grow fast, but to start off, and for the difference in money, let's make it look as good as we can back there.
Duly noted. Anybody, anybody else?
Also, thank you, Mr. Pick.
Mr. Russell, would you like to discuss anything that you know? Okay. Um, okay. Anybody else? Okay, bring it back to the board.
Everything's, all the ducks seem to be all wrong, so, other than the change of the abreviations.
And then the special permit, so we would be, I would recommend that we would make it pending a special permit approval of the oversized lot. Because otherwise, it goes, it's next on the list. It's not gonna be, but we should just do that technically. I...
Well, I don't know, I think they've presented a project, they've certainly worked with the town, they've worked with Mr. Brennan. Brennan, I think, you know, Concorde, Concorde is happy. Zoning Board's happy. It's certainly within their, the right to do it. I think it meets all the requirements, I don't know. I, I'd like a specific, specified, you know, list of contingencies that, that we need, or what's remaining.
Right.
It's, you know, as far as the easement and the abreviations, everything else is pretty much spelt out, I think, in the revisions.
Yeah, I, I do have a question on the easement, if I may. I'm looking through it and trying to read it diligently, but I might be missing something while I'm trying to. It goes with the properties. So if the country club is sold, or Mrs. Alger's sold, it will go forward and be part of...
That is the, that is both of the parties' intent, correct. What you have in front of you is a draft provided by Mrs. Alger's attorney, where he struck some language that basically had that provisioned. Now that we understand that Mrs. Alger is on the same page as us, yes, to answer your question, easements will be permanent, they will run with the land forever.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because, you know...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I would want that to be...
Well, it would be a problem, it would be a problem for everybody if all of a sudden either party's sold, and then you don't have easement there longer, which is in town, that's interesting. So I think, again, you're in agreement with that, yes. So we're, we're on the same page. It's just a matter of just getting the attorneys, yeah, just making the attorneys change the language and all that kinds of...
And at the last meeting too, it was made mentioned that Joey, that, that the maintenance of the, of the easement and the drainage and whatnot will be maintained and inspected at least twice a year, is that all spelt out also? I know you, you...
I, it is, there's certainly the, I don't know about the specificity on the number of times per year, but that's something that, again, could be added, if Mrs. Alger so desires.
I mean, Miss Sillie, remember, was twice a year.
Yeah, I do too, I just don't know if it's in your terms. But again, that's something that Mrs. Alger wants, and it's something...
And is it...
More than happy.
But we also have to make sure that it's not gonna back up on the town and everything as well, so...
So it's something...
I have a chance to read all of it, how's that looking, Amy, as well, Corrigan?
The easement? Well, I'm writing down the things that I want to make sure are in there. And I, do you want to make, did you have a copy?
I, I have it.
All right, I just...
It's gonna take some time to actually study the whole thing. But I just think they're all three of us there, is there a reason?
Yeah, but it will affect the town if it does back up because of the water that comes in from Plymouth Street. So I almost want to say that the Halifax Town Council should also be in agreement with the easement to cover, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I think that they should have the right to review and check it because of the Plymouth Street drainage that does go into it. Just across the... That would be what I would get. Mrs. Russell?
How many buildings, how many units are there to the storage?
So there, Larry, we have a question from Mrs. Russell on Plymouth Street about how many buildings are gonna be on here? Do you want to just answer fully her question?
So through, through the chair, the number of units will be about 340, spread over eight buildings.
And, and one of those buildings is an oversized building?
And we got, oh, yeah, you got the short version of this, yes, yes.
And one of those buildings is an oversized building, will you explain that to...
So one of the buildings is a 9,000 square foot footprint, but it's a two-story building, so the total size of the building is 18,000 square feet gross, 3,000 square feet over here.
15,000, yes.
Hope you don't matter right, size of the building.
Correct.
Not the fact that it's two-story, it's the gross square foot.
It's the gross square foot, yeah, just... So it's not massive, 18,000 square foot, where else?
Right. And do you guys, do you, sorry, do you have the pictures so that they can see how you made it to be like the town?
We, apologies, the architect didn't make it so.
Oh, okay.
We have a look.
Thank you, Larry. We're gonna get to that in a second as well, but just to, I want to fully answer your question.
Do you want to bring it back there, or do you...
Um, maybe so the camera can get it and she can see it, that would be great. Maybe we can clip it to the board, or...
Yeah.
I think that's a little changing, even the next page, it's the same thing. Expenses and...
These are kind of...
Doesn't work.
Render is, yes.
And this is the one that created a two-story, 18,000 square feet, 15,000?
So this is, yeah, yeah, the orientation is difficult to see without, kind of looking. This is actually the back end of the site, this is the two-story building. What you're not seeing here is the giant abreviations along this edge. If you're coming off of Plymouth, you're gonna be coming off and entering the site into this configuration. So the office is right here, back behind, you start to have a series of one-story drive-up buildings along here. That's another image, kind of, high rises and areas, so you can get a better idea of what the site looks like.
Closest building to Plymouth Street is over 400 feet back.
Yeah, then that's, that's this corner right here. Everything else is even farther back.
And there are no overhead, there are no open doors or storage that is visible from the Plymouth Street side?
Yes, and will be a secure, secure facility in the sense that it will be fenced, there will be a gate that's operated, and ultimately, the business will have living and operating hours.
No outside storage.
And no outside storage.
Are you imagining these trees as well?
Yes, yes, yes. I think the only thing we didn't protect is the abreviation.
The giant abreviations are gonna hide that two-story structure?
Yeah, so, so this, this, this two-story structure is 34 feet from grid, actual grid to, to peak of roof. And this structure, I don't have the exact figure, but it's probably almost two football fields away from the road. Slightly less from Mrs. Alger's house. But the giant abreviations, heck, if they started at 14 to, you know, 16 feet, will already hide much of this facility from Plymouth. And I learned something today, if they grew to 30 to 50 feet, you're not gonna see it. Except for...
Not for a lot of size, because they lose our facilities.
That was the point, right?
Which is the other end, we need to go over, is the side edge?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a great question.
They're asking for a special permit, that's true. The special permit would be to go over the 15,000 square foot limit that Halifax has on the building.
And what's in that two-story building, I don't see it, that was not too early?
Well, that is also storage, so the, the one-story buildings are the store, non-climate control, direct access, self-storage. You see them all, right? The two-story building is actually internally accessed, it may be climate controlled. So there is no climate-controlled self-storage, it depends on at least eight mile ring of outlets. So we've got all these here, so man, this is a place where you can put your furniture that you're worried about, like freezing or overheating or things like that, so hence the two-story building.
So what I'm picturing is a giant one, like, like, like the one outside of BJ's Navon? Is it, is a storage, climate-controlled building that's enormous?
I don't, I don't know the facility you're talking about. My guess is that's probably, because I have guessed, if it's one building containing self-storage, it's probably 50,000 to 60,000 square feet. I only know this because if you're gonna do one self-storage facility, whether it's forward, it was a combination of drive-up and, and, and climate control, in order to make the facility...
Sorry, thank you.
Operator, you need to have the 30,000 or 40,000 or 50,000 square feet total. So, again, I don't know the facility you're talking about, but my guess is it's probably multiple stories over two, and probably, I would guess, 50,000 square feet, you know, through on dark stairs, so...
Where did you say that was, so I could look it up?
It's outside of the road, behind BJ's Wholesale Club in Amherst. It's pretty big, it's big.
Yeah, yeah, again, my, my guess is it's huge. And this is 18,000 square feet, that building's, again, it shows together. When I say through on darts, I'm really referring to the fact that I can't...
It's not this...
I have no idea.
How many units are contained within that space, these days?
I don't have that number off here.
It's still 9,000.
They're varying sizes.
Oh, Cube Smart, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Cube Smart looks like it is three and a half stories tall. And it, it, yeah, it won't look like that.
No, it's gonna be much, much...
Just so you guys can feel what she's talking about.
And then, again, I think the other thing to take into account here is, because the building is only 34 feet tall, it's actually, you know, this is a two-story building, but you have, you know, 14-foot ceilings. It's gonna be much shorter than this building, it's gonna be five, 600 feet off the road. And then the, the giant abreviations.
And further, there's no activity that takes place on the sides that you see from Plymouth Street. The loading, the entrance to that two-story is on the golf course side. So there's no, there's no, visually, you wouldn't see any activity if you saw it, unless you went around to the golf course. You're on the golf course, you might see somebody going in and out of it. You won't see it.
So you're saying there's no outside storage?
There's no storage of vehicles, vehicles, things like that, yeah.
Okay, so can you come before the board and ask for that at a later date?
What?
Outside storage.
I suppose we could, but I know how they're gonna... By the way, it's not something that we're interested in doing. Like, first of all, there's no space left on the site in order to accommodate that. And even if we were gonna try to play games, we're not, we're not gonna do that. We're trying to build, build, so bottom line is, number one, we're not interested in doing that business. Number two, if you ever did try to make it official, based on our evening impact...
The planning board put it, put it down as a condition for the permits, that there would be no outside storage of RVs, boats, cars, anything like what we have on 106.
So these presumably also...
Right, and zone, well, well, no, well, zoning just approved the use in business, but they, yeah.
Have to have that as a condition.
Chris Winewix? Chris Winwicks?
Chris, I don't know if it's going to be nice or it's true, just to recap, because there's been a lot of users seeing the pictures from outside. Do you think all the lighting will be like that sky's flying?
Yes.
Does everyone know which glow of the sky?
Everything starts like a plane.
We have the light.
We had a photo taken in the plan that was submitted, this is the planning board, not the announcement commission, that it's zero lemons on a property.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Mr. Corrigan?
As far as these small individual units where they have an overhead door, they just pull in.
Yeah.
Do you get their access during the day but not at night? Is there any way that you monitor what is being put into that storage area?
We won't monitor the interior of the storage area, we won't monitor the site. But we don't monitor the interior because it's effectively a lease, right? To, I'm going to just, I'm going to guess what your concern is. We do have leases, and so again, this is extra space storage, second largest publicly traded REIT that does self-storage management. There is a very, their leases are fairly long and restricted in terms of you can actually store it. So chemicals, no. I mean, just imagine, if you don't want stored close, it's some kind of hazard or illegal, that kind of thing, you're not allowed to store it. We don't actively go peek into people's units. Make sure that you comply unless there's a complaint of smells or that you fail to pay the rent, we're forced to put a leave on the property, cut the lock, and then call Palm Stars.
Because I'm thinking in terms of flammables, like somebody's moving, which you've got riding lawnmower or a lawnmower or a snow blower, and instead of draining the thing like they should, they just show it in that compartment with gas.
Yeah.
Okay? A little bit of a hazardous situation, but not sure how that's controlled, if that's in their original.
Just by written leases, yeah, yeah.
And there is management on the site when it's being operated. So when somebody comes in with, with.
Right.
Stuff that obvious that they should be going in, they're going to say something.
They sign a contract.
They sign a contract, yeah, absolutely.
And then I think we have signage to talk about. Do you have signage planned?
Also, yes, those were submitted, I know they were submitted to you, I don't know if you have them.
Those came from the architect.
Yeah.
But they, basically they will comply with one breath.
So like I mentioned, signage will be on the site, there will be one, one granite sign on the office building that I showed, along with a smaller sign that says office. And again, this is on the building entering the site. We size those based off of your sign. There will be a, I forget the term, I was, a pilot sign out of five clinic that will be not backed up, but under the, but again, we just not only size the sign to your specs, but we also lit it based off of your specs.
And position based on your specs. So we're not looking for anything outside of what is, what's allowed.
There's no profile of signs on this, right? There's no.
And the site.
No, on the site plan, it would have been submitted to the architect.
The architectural's on the split. They got details on the site.
But I think it shouldn't be in here.
Because they show it on their.
Some of the other plans that we've had, the sign was in here. Do you recall that? I can call a recess and go to the office and grab the file.
Yeah, unfortunately, we called the architect.
The phone should not make.
Yeah, you can see that, but as far as the building sign.
You can't see the pedestal one, the one that's on the building. That's a, you can see that, that's a, that's a small sign on the building itself, right? Just on the building.
And then at the road.
And then at the road, on the site plan, there is a site, there is a location for one there.
And then the sizing. Because the sizing has to be in here so that we sign off on it. Can we get that?
Yeah, you had it, it was submitted to you in the architecturals that were in the originals. But.
Can I have a motion for our recess and I'll go and get it out of there? Oh, there it is.
Oh, you got it, you got that. We tried to load you up so that you'll have a candlelight for the fires in the summertime. Here's the sign right there, it's going right in that location right there.
Does it have a sign on it? It's the architectural.
Yeah, that one, that's like this one here, I don't think, I don't, maybe that one does have it.
It's the architectural.
Well, I know, but there was, was there a separate one?
But, I mean, I think there's something like six pages of restrictions on the sign.
Unless you use the notice card or something too.
Yeah, exactly. It's going to be in compliance with the content.
It just showed the location for the sign right there.
Basically, bottom line, they're showing the location of the sign.
Yeah.
And it has to be in compliance with the.
That's right.
Six pages of some requirements that we get.
There's no request for any variances or anything.
No, so it has to comply, that's, and it shows where it's located.
Yeah, I think we have all things, yeah.
Site plan 1223. You got it from the off though?
Yeah.
Please, please, I think we're collecting that, and I don't know if it was in there.
There it is.
You got it?
Yeah, so, okay, so here we go, this is the podium pedestal. Hard to see for me, the bifurcate thing.
So it's a quarter scale, we have a four-inch diameter, six foot height, four foot height, oh, that's diameter, I'm sorry.
So these are corresponding dimensions, A three.
Four foot height.
So here he's got.
Eight foot height.
Seems like it's far enough off.
So A is the width.
Two.
It wouldn't affect you pulling out of your.
We're not causing any further problems.
No, it's far enough that that.
You think so?
We'll just need this as part of the.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
I think that also has its own metrics to it.
Do you want me to help you with the numbers or you, you would be cheaters. You're looking, oh, oh, you got it. Got it.
And again, you know, the concern, you know, as far as vision pulling in and out of there, I don't think it's going to affect it, it's going to be further enough back off Plymouth Street so it wouldn't affect sight of view going either way in and out. And it's at the light, it's right there at the light, so.
All right, it has no more than two faces, 30 square feet. So we are going to do a, B is four, we're just going to round up, just to be is A four, by A it is 28.
And then you do this, right?
That's less, good job. It is less than the 28, it is less than 30 square feet.
It's a four by eight A?
It's not perfectly square.
It's eight foot one by three foot eight inches, so, and I rounded up, so it's going to be less than the 28 square. Yeah, so, did I do the math wrong?
If you do four by four, 3.8, what's your, 4.1?
So it's eight foot one.
Oh, eight.
By, oh, wait a minute. But the sign, that's how tall it is, so wait a minute, I actually will redirect. It is three foot eight inches by, and now I'm, oh yeah, no, it is eight, it is eight.
Eight foot one.
So it's eight by four.
Thirty-two.
Round it up.
Yes, thirty-two square, yeah.
But it's rounded up, so there's four inches off of.
So it's 30 square feet or something, yeah.
Yeah, it's the dimensions are right here.
Oh, 30 square, well, I like to do my own math, so, I'm trying.
So if you round, if you round back to the numbers, it's 30.
Right.
It says it all right here, it's all the dimensions of the square foot.
Thank you, thank you.
3.8, 4.1, 8.1, 3.8, yeah. That's cutting it tight. I mean, if you want to iterate it, the sign has to be.
I'd rather just make sure it's, I make sure it's within the bylaw and I'll be fine. Do you guys want to read the bylaw or?
We'll take your word for it.
We'll take your word for it. It has to comply with common zoning, so there's no incentive not to comply with it.
Right.
To screw it up.
If it doesn't, it requires a variance.
Well, we do want to comply.
Yeah, exactly. We do too.
Good, okay.
Don't want to put an A on something, we know it doesn't comply, but.
Mr. Corrigan?
One more thing while we're talking about signs. I was over in Abingdon at the Walmart the other day, and they've got one of the smartest set of signs I've ever seen, and I'm going to be talking to this Walmart manager very shortly. But anyway, when you enter that parking lot, there's a speed limit sign there that says 12 miles per hour, okay? Not a big sign, just a regular speed limit sign. And when you're coming out, as you're heading towards that exit, the same thing. What you've created here is a lovely little speedway of 400 feet long that some of these little sweetiats that drive through our town don't even think about coming up to that traffic light and hoping that the brakes work. So let's slow them down before they get there by putting a couple of 12 mile an hour speed limit signs on that property in each direction.
All right, is that the mile pro or an apartment lot in Halifax?
No, it's private property. I mean, you can put stop signs up if it's not a public way, well, you can flip them up, certainly, no, you can put them up. I'm just saying enforceable wise, it's, unless it's a public way, there's no jurisdiction over the Halifax Police Department.
Right, what I'm saying is that from the owner's standpoint, do they really want somebody racing up and down their driveway or spend a couple of dollars and put up a couple of 12 mile an hour speed limits?
It's an interesting point.
Well, two things, one's a personal objective. We have a house on Lake Erie, it's, it's a very long roadway. We posted 17 mile an hour speed limit sign. I can tell you from personal experience, they don't work. What, they work at first because it makes you, oh, 17, not 25, okay, I'll slow it down. Then they generally don't work. The other thing is, there's going to be a gate that will separate the sort of driveway from the actual property, so I think you're going to have a natural barrier to prevent that speeding. The other thing is frankly, this is not open to the public as the street. I mean, if you want to put the stipulation on, I suppose you could, but. Yeah, I don't think it's going to be an issue. It is, it does make you think, though.
If it was a speedway, I would say, yes, it's not a square. It's 400 feet towards security.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Frank?
Signage, do the buildings have signs on them too?
Yes.
You know, they illuminate it?
The, again, it's in that specification. There is, on the first building that you see when you enter the site.
Way off.
Way off, sure. And there is a Cube Smart, not Cube Smart, an extra space competition. There's an extra space sign, just a logo, and then there's another sign that's illuminated that just said office.
On the two-story building, I'm kind of more toward that one, I have an elevated sign up at below the line.
None of us.
But from a distance, the sign is there.
There is, yeah.
It's on the, it's on the office complex side of the.
Did you hear me?
Because there are spaces caught between.
Scroll off and look at that.
When you're looking for something. It's kind of scary. All right, we'll definitely need that as part of the site plan that we sign, is the, if that's the way we go, we'll need the signs to be part of the site plan, like the pages. Just have the architect.
Right, okay, that's what I was going to say.
You know, make it a page, you can even send it in and we'll, you know what I'm saying.
He has, again, the apologies, put on the making to last minute, not an issue, so otherwise.
We understand.
We don't have to all cinch it up.
Yep. And what is the size on the building, because we don't have that in hand?
18,000 square feet.
No, no, not, no, the sign on the building.
Oh, on the sign on the building, I want to say nine square feet, yeah. It's a very large, nine square feet is what I want to say. Again, we were careful to read your code before we sized the size.
Thank you.
I'm sure that Eric will make sure that you have plans to verify that for the signature.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board, any further discussions?
I think we covered everything.
So my thoughts on the easement, I think that we should have as part of our approval, the two times, make sure it's pertinent, which I know you said it was, but with Halifax Country Club and the Alder property, go over hours, stipulate the signage has to follow and have a copy for the site plan, and stipulate no outside storage ever, just to be, right? And what about the aborities? I kind of like the idea, I feel like I was indicated by one of the owners that it would probably be okay. I think it would only benefit not only the abbottors, but also the town. Any other thoughts?
What else do we have? What else can we talk about since?
I have a question for you on the variance. How many, is there a time period that it can be appealed?
20 days.
Okay, so if it was. What date it? One question. What date it, what's the date?
Monday, 11th, or sorry, 10th, 10th.
So we're at 10 days out, so we, we, okay, so we might want to stipulate that there's no, I don't foresee that there will be, but just we approve the site plan as long as that is not appealed by April 30th. You know what I'm saying?
You know, if you can do that.
And all permits required.
Yeah, all permits are good.
I just want to, I just think that we should mention it. Even if we put it to, is subject to all permits and variances staying in place?
I think that's a given.
All right, well, I just, I think sometimes.
Good point, though, I mean, it would, if it went.
I don't foresee it. I don't foresee it.
Yeah, but if it did, it would still have to be contingent upon, uh, approval, you know, from. I think it, yeah. I've never seen it before, to be honest with you, no. Contingent upon the twenty-day.
Halifax bylaws.
Either, either the permit that was voted on is in effect or not, or even if it went to court, they'd still have to wait until that whole thing got settled.
Right, and I totally get that, but my thought process on it is that if the variance doesn't go through, then we just approved all these buildings for our site plan, a different use could come in. No?
I don't think so. I personally don't think so. We can only vote on what's in front of us, you know, can't be contingent upon something that may happen down the road. I'm not aware of it, Amy, to be honest with you. You know, never seen one before that was done like that.
Well, I guess it would just, it's just a thought process, have you ever seen that, Pat?
Well, like Larry says, typically, you know, they need to get all of the permits in place, and that concludes that variance of being upheld without an appeal.
Okay, and what about, just as a, I'm just kinda playing devil's advocate, I'm making sure that we're crossing all the Ts. What if we approved the site plan with all these different buildings on it, and then the use was appealed and then it was pulled, so then this would be null and void too? Or could they use the other buildings for a different use?
I, well, I don't know what they're using for, but, I mean, I think, I don't see why you couldn't have a condition that you're approving a self-storage facility.
Okay.
If it was anything different than what was applied for, any substantial change, which a change of use would certainly be, it's required that they'd have to come back in front of the board.
True, but like I said, I just wondered. Do you see where I'm going there?
Yes, oh, a hundred percent.
Okay, all right, anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, and hold on one more thing, about the town council.
I don't know, I was looking, it seems like, it seems like they're covered there anyway, if you read this.
And the only other thing. Amy, this is a, I think the easement itself really has nothing to do with the town. This is between, you know, the applicant and the Algeas, you know, it's really got nothing to do with us as the town.
And that gets back to the agreements, if the easements have not agreed to with Mrs. Algea, then it's the same thing, the rest of this can't go forward.
And my suggestion was if you wanted to stipulate the building permit couldn't be issued, and I don't know if they've ever done this, but you can still hold the construction of the property up, you know, until your building permit guy is like, he's checked in zoning, checked in planning, checked in conservation.
I'd like the word on that.
Two for the easements have been recorded.
Yeah, as far as the content of the easement, that's really the private.
With any other complaint, grievance, or appeal of any abutment, which we would be, okay. Well, just a thought.
I don't think we have to get to that also.
All right, well, I would agree after reading that again. Okay, okay.
All right, so I make a motion to approve. Where are we at?
Get the number.
Yeah, right now.
You can see petition for zero three fourteen.
Petition for zero three fourteen Plymouth Street.
But is it two of those? No, I mean, so is it SP, is it on the, just because of the address, the zero three fourteen? Do you guys have a special, it's SP, no, that's special permit.
There's a revision block that shows the latest revision of the plans as being today.
So site plan, specify site plan.
As revised through four twenty.
You guys haven't been issued a, an assessor, like the assessor's office hasn't issued you a new number.
You can just call it Halifax Self-Storage, that's all.
I'll just say Halifax Self-Storage, zero three fourteen Plymouth Street, with this stipulation is two times a year. Cleaning the easement, you know, the easement's drained, whatever. The what?
It's an apartment, isn't it?
Appertinent?
Yeah, means it continues when it sells.
Maybe you should have read it.
Well, me too, I will. All right, I'll make one, all right. Usually I don't make a motion, and it's here, but is that all right with you guys?
These are conditions.
These are just conditions.
Okay, so you're making a motion to approve the Halifax Self-Storage, and with the conditions that the easement will stay two times a year, plus if necessary, it will be an appertinent easement with the Halifax Country Club and the Algea property. The hours will be, what were the hours?
I shouldn't have this off the top of my head, my partner is really the one that does that. It was Monday through Friday, as far as the site is concerned, Monday through Friday, six, I wanna say it's six AM to ten PM, and, but again, I kinda feel like, and then Saturday and Sunday, something like eight to two PM, eight AM to two PM.
So those are the hours of operation, or is that just, you're speaking about the hours that the office is on?
Eight hours.
So there's no access to the property?
Office hours will technically be shorter than that.
Yeah, but there's no access to the property after ten PM.
And on Saturday was a short, it was only, I don't think it was true, I think it was like close to five or six. But it was a later start on Sunday, and it wasn't early to finish. But it was, it was like eight to six on the Sunday. But it was, Saturday was, was like eight to, you know, a rumble at late time.
Yeah.
And that is the Monday to Friday.
I know Frederick addressed it in the very first planning work hearing on March fourth, it's on the table.
But there's no access to the storage units after ten o'clock at night?
No, correct.
There's no code you put in, gate opens up.
Correct. Yeah, you could live in for that.
You're okay with that, as a city?
Eight, yes.
So, so basically, six AM to ten PM is the hours, wanna do that? We'll do the six to ten in that way.
Some flexibility.
Yeah, cause I mean, we're not trying to like.
Yeah. You just don't want people there doing donuts.
That kind of stuff, okay. So the hours would be Monday, all days, six to ten, six AM to ten PM. This, we're gonna specify that we have sheets for the signage on, with the dimensions for the site plan, for the sign at the street and on the building, that follow all Halifax bylaws, and stipulate that no outside storage will ever happen.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Now we'll move on to the special permit for the building.
Do you want a presentation on that?
Do you?
I personally don't.
I think all we need to do here is say, does anybody have anything to say about the oversized building? We're good? Clear?
I'll make a motion to accept the special permit for the applicant located at three fourteen Plymouth Street, the Halifax Self-Storage.
Four and eighteen thousand square foot building, which is only three thousand above the fifteen, right?
Yes.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys did an amazing presentation this whole time, I have to say.
Thanks for working with the town, we appreciate it. Appreciate the effort, thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much, appreciate the help.
I'm only listening here. Oh, we didn't do the abovities? The abovities are a part of that as well, okay? We're gonna adjust the amended, okay? So it's added in. So Peggy, when you're watching the video, we're doing the abovities as well, and the block wall. Aye, aye, all those in favor? All right, cool, right? Mine as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, me too. Only on those other things. Hi, Joe. Oh, so we need to make a motion to, so next on our agenda is three fifty-nine Plymouth Street, and we need a motion to continue this hearing to May fourth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM.
Do we have a letter from the stipulant?
I don't have it in hand, but it's probably done with Peggy.
It was their request. I'll make a motion to accept the continuance of the three fifty-nine Plymouth Street to May fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second it.
At seven PM. Yep, cause we have to do it time, sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Nothing, nothing, but we're all good with the time with that, too.
Yeah, well, because we're doing.
You know, what time was with the application.
Yeah, well, I bet her a million dollars that if Peggy saw that it was gonna need an extension, she would have pushed it through, but we should make sure that it's within the extension.
We don't get constructive, too.
Um, next we have discussion and actions to be taken on four sixteen Plymouth Street, the Kennedy Canaan Canaan. Anybody here have stuff this with us?
Yes. Daniel Kennedy, I've got more of them, they can't, yeah. So I had previously submitted a site plan for approval, and we were running a submission outdoor area. I've decided to remove the outdoor area into a fully indoor facility, and try to move ahead of that.
Where would you be taking the dogs outside?
The dogs will not be going outside, it's fully indoor.
Oh, so how does that?
The only time they would go outside would be if they were in my van for pack walks at local trails and parks, whether or not they're. Everything inside, that would be, we would just clean up as they go, and non-horse flooring, cleaning capital, bags, things like that, disposable in a dumpster outside of that, where they, I think there's already a pad there for the previous dumpster. And I was planning to possibly, maybe like outside the door, put like a small potty area if people were, you know, bringing their dogs in for them to use before they go inside, they could be easily cleaned. But that's just an extra option.
Have you run that by the Board of Health in Halifax?
Uh, no, I literally just started talking this week about like how I would restart this process, just being, that I previously applied and wanted to make changes.
Correct, well, I just thought that would probably be something that you might wanna talk to them about, like the indoor porus and throwing it in the dumpster, and also that small outdoor area, that would be my thought process, you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
I would talk to them.
Well, that's, there's been nobody in any of the other offices, so when I was talking about this, I was in the Health Department, and he was over here, and I mean, you know, I can bring it up to him.
I would just recommend that before you go and do all kinds of plans, come before us and present it, I would probably talk to them about all of that. And ask, wouldn't you?
Sure, why not, but it'd be safe and sorry. The only other question I have is, where do we stand with your application? For me, on this, you withdrew your application from before, so you're resubmitting it? It's not still active, is what I guess it was.
No.
So it'd have to be resubmitted?
Yeah.
I think it was withdrawn without prejudice, to be honest with you, I believe. Your original application with the, you know, the blocking area or whatnot. Everything else is the same, the drop wall, pickup type thing?
Yeah.
Same area, same traffic flow? Nothing else to change?
It was that whole site.
Right, the place, something like the handicap park, and so on, the door, being, or that, is that, everything else is the same.
It is probably a good idea with the pet area outside, because the animals riding in the car for so long, as soon as they get out and into the air, that probably would want.
Better do it in, man.
Yeah, there you go.
Happens all the time. Vets and lawyers.
And you did withdraw?
Yeah.
We didn't rule on it.
You did what?
We didn't rule on it.
No, so it was withdrawn without prejudice, I believe. All right, so where does that leave the gentleman now, does he have to reapply, does he have to re-advertise, does he have to?
Well, he has application for site memory right here, so he has to give us the new, um, August, I'm sorry, April. Eighteenth.
Oh, good.
So you guess what you're gonna do, and right now this picks off that the other boards are gonna comment, but I would still think that you wanna go and talk to the Board of Health about that.
Okay, first of all, the previous site plan I submitted before that you guys have on file, do I need to make a new one for that, if that's not changing aside from the outdoor area showing on it? Or does that seem usable?
Well, you'd have to submit a new one that doesn't show the outside area. We don't wanna approve on the outside area, and you say, hey, you approved this, I'm putting it outside.
Yeah, for sure.
So that's pretty simple thing to do, you know, didn't look like there's a lot of stuff to do.
So I'd probably get, so you have a forty-five day window for this, so you need to make sure you get it in, so we can get the comments within the thirty days, so that we can see you.
Okay.
Thank you. No other questions, from the audience, right?
Anybody else have anything to say about Kennedy's Canaan? So next we have mail and correspondence, did everybody look through that, and, okay?
Next we have is what?
The mail and correspondence, so we have seventy-four and zero Congress Street, a site plan, in Pembroke, sorry, a site plan and a special permit for a public hearing notice. We have in Bridgewater, zero Jasmine Way, an abutment notification, and various other abutting towns, and their notices, I looked through them, I didn't see anything. Meeting minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, did you guys go over those? They're pretty much verbatim, right?
I would, I'd like to submit the minutes of twenty pages. There was just little corrections spilling, you know, time, seven seventy-five PM, you know, little things.
Oh, thanks.
I hide a lot, and if they, you wanna pass them on to Peggy or whatever, just, you know, spilling errors.
Is that what we do in retirement, I hope not?
Yeah, that's what we do. Well, I didn't have a chance, like last meeting, I did not have a chance to go through, so I wanted to make sure.
The highlights of what you changed?
Oh, should be looked at, right? One of them I, I online, so, it was attendance, so nobody would vote on it, that wasn't after me.
Oh, that one.
What's that?
BOID.
You missed that one.
Did I miss that one?
No, yeah.
I just go over on my, on my email, and I didn't see all the stuff like that.
I know, I can't, I have to do them in print, I can't do it on my phone, it's too little.
I don't like the blue light in my eyes.
I wonder if you have the water table, what does that say?
It's only for hearings. It's only for hearings. I think they're all right, but I'm not getting all of it, I mean, I'm just looking at what you have, spellings. I think they're all right, but I'm not getting all of it, I mean, I'm just looking at what you have, spellings, okay, committed. Oh, there's Frank. Okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, um, or I'll, I'll, I'll put up a, a motion to approve Burke's grandma corrected January 19th, 2023, meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I get, oh, so do we ask her to retype it, or do we just sign?
Well, I think she has it on, on, uh, she just have to.
I think it's good enough, so.
Yeah, cause she just has to pass it in, you know what I mean, yeah? So I'll just write sign, Burke's, um, corrections.
And then that to her, so they don't go flying, oh, you gotta take the. Oh, all right.
So you put a paperclip on it, is that what you did?
Richard Gainer, that book.
Really?
Yeah.
Are you gonna cross it out?
Yeah, all right.
You didn't yell that one.
I can't even see it till it's back.
Who's that?
Call me Ricky.
I didn't see. Um, and then we have the February 16th.
Damn, Richard Gainer again.
With the correction.
There was only one correction that I found on the second page, it was just a typo, so it's, that's all I found on that, isn't that?
On which one? Page what?
Second page, we're down low, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 lines up, commented that both he met, both they met with the police chief, don't beg it, just a grin.
They?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve the, uh, can I get a motion to approve the February 16th, 20, 2023 meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the February 16th, 2023 meeting minutes with, uh, small correction.
And?
In the small.
A member.
And, and Robert.
Member of.
Like she's, she did Richard Gainer. Is that Robert Mary? Hey, what is, what's side, what's side Liz called?
Yeah, let's do that, okay.
I really missed that one.
I did. That's funny. You said I didn't cross it out, I don't remember. Did you, did they say you're on a favor, and I said aye? Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. That was presented.
Okay, that was funny. All right, and, um, now a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Thank you.